Did she not?
Yeah.
I can go my copies.
I don't realize she didn't.
I have an electronic one.
I thought they, I thought she.
Oh, it's alright, it's alright.
I don't cover.
David, what date did I tell you? August seventh, wasn't it?
Yeah.
Sam, August seventh. We're gonna try to have a combined city county commission meeting, just to get together.
At noon.
At noon.
Hello, hey everyone.
That's a, hello. My. Coming on the phone?
Uh, did, uh, it's, uh, somebody was on your phone, commission number?
Yes, somebody's on the.
Oh, hello, hey.
Steve.
Yeah, I'm over here, hold on just a moment.
That's a third.
I'm getting ready to start, hi, or, give me just a moment, okay, so we can start this meeting. Um, I just got you on a little phone, but I'm putting your speaker here, so everybody can hear you. Wish I had a bigger speaker.
That's fine. There's, there's a few others that are gonna be joining, so if you guys need to do something formal to start it, um, go right ahead, I've been just waiting on a few of the stronghold team members to, to get on.
Okay.
Meeting in order. Raj, for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Let's pray. Father God, we thank you for this day, thank you for this opportunity to come together and, uh, as a collective body and help us make our decisions, uh, in your word and keep us strong in our convictions. We ask this in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
So, we are up with stronghold update when we're ready.
Hey, Jason, are you ready?
I'm ready, are you ready?
We are.
Well, I, you know, first I just wanna say thank you for, um, everyone that i- is in attendance today. Um, you know, uh, really the purpose of, of scheduling this meeting is just to, um, give you, uh, both the county of Bourbon and the city of Fort Scott, uh, the ability to ask, you know, any questions. Um, we're gonna kinda highlight just a few high level things, you, you know, as we're preparing our final, uh, findings. Uh, one of the things that I would like to accomplish, uh, by the end of the meeting i- is kinda schedule a time when we can deliver those within, uh, we're definitely gonna have something available either late next week or early next week is kind of our, uh, proposed, um, timeline to deliver the, the final assessments, which will contain much, much more information than, uh, what we are going to, to cover today. So, feel free at any time as we just kinda go down through here, um, and kinda share some of the information. Hopefully it might spark some questions, so that way, uh, we have a chance to answer those. We wanna make sure that, uh, you feel like we have inspected and covered everything that you, uh, desire and, uh, you know, want included in those reports. So, that's really kind of our objective of this call today, a- again, is really not to dive deep into any of the findings, but, um, uh, just a, an opportunity for us to share some things, spark some questions. Uh, I have the team on here, I have Avion Bryant, I have Adam Lepardo and Joe Thomas. Uh, this is an opportunity for also, uh, the stronghold team to ask questions as they're preparing, uh, their items. I know that you will not be able to see this, cause you're joining via a, a cellphone, but, um, for those that are near the cellphone, I do have just a few slides that I'm going to, um, ask. Um, Avion, do you wanna go ahead and, and populate those slides?
I, uh, do.
So, um, the first slide that is appearing, you know, in this and that we're gonna kinda talk about is, uh, we're gonna start first a- at Bourbon County. Um, some of the things that we wanna make sure that kinda sounds right. You know, we are running some scanning tools throughout your environment. We are picking up that you have as a county eighty-two active computers. You have ninety-five active users. We're finding, um, about a hundred and eighty-one inactive computers that potentially, um, just, there's some maintenance that maybe needs to be done to those. And typically those may not actually be devices that are in play, it's just maybe some credentials, um, some, uh, machines that are still appearing as they're there. So, um, that, that just may highlight some, some maintenance stuff. And then there are showing forty-five inactive users, which means that they have not logged in for thirty-plus days. So again, you know, some, some maintenance items that, that may need to be done there. So, um, Bourbon County, um, any, anything like that, um, that, does those numbers kind of sound right on the active computers and active users? Is, I just wanna maybe kinda clarify that.
We have roughly a hundred employees, so the active probably so, all of those. I don't know how you have less devices than active people, but.
Well, there may be some instances where, um, obviously you might have some employees that aren't using a device. You know, it's not uncommon in some counties where maybe there's some road and bridge folks that don't really, you know, log in. So, you know, that's not uncommon for us to see that also. Sometimes you have more users than devices, because like at the sheriff's department, where you're running multiple shifts, you have folks that are using one device, but you have three different people logging into that device. So, i- it does make sense, um, to ha- to have those numbers kind of a little bit different, but I just wanted to make sure that what we're kinda scanning and seeing kind of sounds right, where that we're on the, on the same page there.
Is this breakdown for, this is Samuel, um, is this breakdown just for the county or county-city combined?
That, the numbers we're talking about right now is just the county. The city I'm gonna, I'm gonna, the next slide I'm gonna show is kinda, gonna show some city information and we're gonna be kinda doing the same thing for the city.
Can we email those slides to everybody, Adam? Or?
Yes, absolutely.
Jason, sorry, Jason.
Not a problem. So, I, I, I think we're on, on the, on the right page on, on that. Um, just from a, a hardware standpoint, you know, that you're gonna see in there is, it looks like you had some of the servers that you have, there's going to be, um, a roadmap needing to, uh, refresh those, because they're, uh, going, uh, they're at or near their recommended life cycle. Um, so you're gonna see that. The one thing on some, some, uh, workstations out of those eighty-two, there was about twenty-seven of those, um, that are, you know, again, uh, gonna be needing to talk about end of life. So, from a, uh, you know, a hardware standpoint, I just wanted to kinda share that information wi- with you, um, you know, on some of the, what, some of your users across the county, um, are interacting with and, and doing things there. So, the next one, uh, you know, we're gonna get into, uh, the city, uh, of Fort Scott now. Um, Avion, if you wanna go ahead and go to the next slide for those that maybe can see it. Um, so, the city, you know, we're still digging into and separating all the devices out. So that's why this slide kinda looks a little bit different than what we have for the county. And the reason for that is the city of, uh, Fort Scott, you have about, we've discovered about two-hundred-and-forty-six devices across five different networks. Um, and so, you're gonna see kind of, we have a network map that was done by your previous IT team that, um, kinda highlights where all of these devices are. So, when we're talking about devices, you know, we're looking at anything that is connected to the internet. And, uh, those things could include, you know, security cameras, uh, access points that are generating wifi, you know, just any of those things. Now, out of the most, um, uh, the greatest percentage of devices connected is some security cameras. Um, Dawa is, uh, leading that. The one thing that, um, you know, that, that is something we're gonna have to, uh, discuss in your findings is when you, uh, go to the FTC guidelines for, um, hardware, you're gonna find that Dawa is on a list that, um, of hardware that should not be in use or if it was purchased with federal dollars, um, there, there's some things that we, we need to, to talk about. So, um, that's one of the things that's all within these devices. Now, one of the things that we're still sorting out, and Brad, if you can hear me, um, could you confirm again about how many employees you have across the city, um?
We've got about a hundred and five full-time and forty part-time during the, they're probably seasonal instead of part-time.
Seasonal, okay.
They won't have devices.
Right, and out of that number, about what are you thinking, uh, has devices? And then Adam and Avion, if, yeah, I don't know, I don't have that in my slide, but if you have those numbers, we can kinda make sure we're on the same page, uh, with the city.
If I had to guess, probably around seventy percent of them, so about seventy.
Okay.
Some type of device.
Adam, is, is that kinda matching up with some of your findings there?
The, yeah, I believe so. One of the things that's not listed in this report is like asset, like as far as like computer asset, like Dell and Apple specific assets. Um, you can see it just didn't make this cutoff, but you also do see this unknown devices that's flagged right here. Um, what, when I was looking at MAC addresses and everything in the actual report that came out, what it looks like is these unknown devices are out-of-age computers that like had reached their lifespan, which we saw in some of our other reporting, that it was just they weren't reporting properly to the, uh, to the network collector that we had.
Correct.
But, uh, we're, we're gonna be able to probably dial that in some. It just was not, not ready for, you know, tonight's, uh, you know, phone calls, we're going through that. Um, really, you know, uh, the thing that, you know, we're gonna get into a little bit later is just the segmentation that needs to be done both at the county and the city. Um, and really that is, you, you know, from a, uh, security posture, there's some best practices that you're going to see that's gonna involve, um, setting it up, uh, certain areas, um, within the county, within the city, but definitely separating the, the city and the county. Um, going really quick, yeah, Avion, could you go ahead and go to the next slide in this, um, again? So this right here, this map that you're seeing, it's the, it's the map of the city of Fort Scott network topology. This was a map that, uh, was shared with us during, uh, you know, when we were onsite by your, your IT team. And it is, you know, pretty detailed, that's, uh, showing where some of all, all those two-hundred-plus devices are at for the county. I will say that, uh, uh, it, this, this drawing that was shared with us, you know, highlights how complex, uh, the city, you know, and how you guys are, are really set up. Um, you know, and, and it also is going to spark that question is, you know, we're doing this interim support. Um, and that number that we gave was basically based on the amount of, of devices that we did not have access to before we got this. And when you have this number of devices, it really, uh, you know, you can kinda see how much work really needs to be done from an IT standpoint. If you flip really quick to, this is a, um, not quite as detailed of a map as the one that you're seeing here. Avion, could you go to slide four, please? This is a, um, just a quick snapshot of some of the data that we're pulling as we're mapping things out. It's a little more difficult on the county side, just because of some of how things are set up. You have some, uh, switches that are, you know, uh, not enabling us to complete it digitally, so it has to have eyes on. But the one that we circled, the reason why I asked this to be put in here, is this is, you know, things that we're finding that should be part of the county, but in this network map, you can see like Public Works is in there. And I think, uh, Avion, wouldn't there another one? Um, I can't remember, I, it, I'm having a hard time seeing it. There was another one that highlights that in this network map, it's just how the city and county are intermingled, um, in, in certain areas. I think one was the landfill, was that right, Avion? I think it was the landfill that was in this one.
Yeah, that's correct.
So we're, we're, we're seeing a lot of overlap, um, across, uh, the area. So, uh, the last, you know, we're gonna kinda go to the last slide.
Jason, this is Brad Matkin. You said, did you say Public Works was interchanged with the landfill?
Well, what you're seeing, I don't know if you can see this slide on the phone there, Brad, but this network map is just showing like how Public Works and landfill, we see them as two separate entities, but they're just part of the network of the county. And so when I mean overlap, that means is like, um, you know, if I'm in the county's network, I can see Public Works and I can see, uh, you know, the landfill based on this, this drawing here.
Yeah, there, there's a, there's a county Public Works also. There's a county Public Works, the landfill is the county. The city also has a, a lan- and has a, uh, Public Works. The city doesn't have a landfill.
Avion, it was those, um, the counties or the cities that we were seeing there? Are, are you able to tell that? Cause I know that stood out to me.
Uh, we allowed to just check the actual IP address of them, they just label Public Works. I mean, you have, it's labeled Public Works on, on, on both sides. So, we can connect to both, that's for sure.
That, that's a, um, you know, a resolution is gonna be to make sure you have the network segmentation, so that way, you know, um, county can't see city, city can't see county. But even within, um, an organization, you know, we're able to see where, um, you can log in at, like at the city and you can see a lot of, of different things that will be solved by, by segmentation. And that's where, um, gonna kinda jump, you know, I, I just wanted you to kinda s- get a sense of what we're seeing from a network side of things, how this, how your technology i- is laid out. Um, but you know, from that, what we're, what we're showing you right here is you're gonna probably see some projects, work that's gonna have to be done first and foremost. What, what you're gonna probably start talking about is some network segmentation, again, separating the county from the city. Uh, for the city, you, uh, there's some legacy camera infrastructure that, uh, you're gonna, you're gonna see that we're going to be talking about. There are some, you know, devices that are gonna need to be refreshed, because they're just, you know, close to the end of life. Um, and then, you know, uh, there's just some, some support and monitoring, um, items that need to go on. And, you know, really this, I wanted to kinda talk about two recent incidents to kinda highlight the support and marketing is, or, not marketing, monitoring, excuse me. Um, two, two recent incidents that we, you know, we, you know, helped with is, one on the, a county side, um, there was a software, um, that you employ and this particular software on this particular laptop, uh, was creating issues. The, the user was having a lot of frustrations. Well, upon discovery is that that software is meant to run, um, and, and Adam, it was it set to run at thirty-two bit? And it was, the machine was set at sixty-four bit, is that my understanding?
Correct, yes sir.
And so that setting within that, that computer, um, was causing issues. That, that software vendor recommended a certain setting, but that computer. But to really fix it, you almost have to, um, what Adam was explaining to me, re-image the entire machine and kinda, you know, start over kinda thing. And so, that's kinda some of the things that, you know, we, we're seeing, uh, commonplace is, is, you know, little things like that, some easy wins for the county. On the city side, there was a, another, um, issue with a user, um, and a device here recently that, uh, when it came to like payroll. And that issue was caused because you had automatic updates set to just do it whenever. And when that audit, when that update went through, it kind of, you know, in our terminology, kinda bricked the machine. Uh, isn't, isn't that right, Adam? Kind of what your investigation found and?
Yes, sir.
So, um.
That was the county.
Was that the county, I'm sorry? I, so, um.
It's okay, we know we're intermingled, we know what you're talking about.
Yeah, thank you, Micah. I, I, there, there's just a lot going, you know, for both. But tho- those two examples are some really recent examples of, you know, just little things that, um, you're gonna find in the report, and I just wanted to kinda talk to those. Now, I know I said like some device refresh, you know, even though that there are some that are coming close to end of life and then the, the county and city can start having roadmaps on, on what best steps to take. I mean, um, as, th- there are options out there, it's just, you know, really divi- you know, sitting down and devising the best next steps for you there. On the other side, we also found, you know, we're seeing some hardware that was recently purchased that can be utilized and, uh, currently, you know, some may not be at its fullest potential. So there's, you know, some good news, uh, about really, uh, going in and being able to maximize the county and city's investment in, in some of those newer hardwares and newer systems. So, that's a, a definite positive. Um, but really, uh, the two biggest, you know, things that you're going to see is that camera refresh and, and the, the network segmentation when we, you know, start delivering the reports. So, um, really, these are the kinds of things that we're finding, these are the kinds of things that we're documenting. So, with some of this information I, I presented, what questions do you have of the stronghold team before I open it up for Adam and Avion to kinda ask some, some of our final questions before we assemble this, this report?
So, this is Samuel, on the, um, Dawa, on the Dawa cameras, when you guys come back with recommendations, are those cameras going to be proprietary?
Can you say that again, Sam, please?
So, if you guys come back with recommendations for new camera, for camera upgrades, um, will those cameras be proprietary? For instance, will they be Siemens cameras, where only Siemens technician can, um, maintain them and upgrade them?
Well, we typically don't come back and say, hey, you buy this camera or this camera. Um, you know, there, there's a lot of different vendors out there. We don't actually, you know, sell cameras. But we, you know, we can actually, um, you know, if the city or county were like, hey, let's explore what would be the best steps. Our, how we do things is we would wanna give you a list, like here's, here's three different options. Which one would be the best fit, you know, taking into account, you know, your budgetary, um, constraints, uh, when it comes to a project like that. Also, what, what is going to be the best, uh, fit, you know, for the use cases that we have? Um, how easy are they to, to maintain? You know, obviously we don't want them to be on any of the FTC, you know, lists. So, we can kinda guide you in that way, but yes, um, we don't have a relationship, nor do we install cameras. So, um, that's just something that, uh, we would be happy to if you, if you wanted us to, to vet different systems.
So what I'm hearing is you're saying when it comes to security cameras, that's probably gonna be a third-party contractor that initiates that work? With, with your suggestions?
That would be correct.
Okay, alright.
Now, I don't have anything against Siemens, but, uh, you know, that's just not something that, you know, we're, we're not in the security camera business. I mean, uh, we do work with entities that have security cameras and our goal is to make sure that when they connect into a network, that it's, you know, secure and it functions, you know, like, um, our clients want them to, to function. And, you know, we do have different vendors that, that's what they specialize in and we would let them, you know, submit, um, their recommendations and proposals, uh, as we would help the, the county vet through those.
Gotcha. So this statement is to the people in the room, not to, to the vendor. I would recommend not going with proprietary cameras, because the problems that you guys are having with Johnson control in the hospital, you're gonna have the same issue with Siemens.
Oh, understood.
Because what happens is, they're a good company, there's nothing wrong with them, it's just they deal in big, big, big projects, big contracts.
And we'd be small potatoes and not on the top of their list.
Yeah, and well, it's, it's getting them to come out here unless there's a local Siemens vendor at Joplin, which I don't know if there is or not, but I know in KC, it's hard just to get Siemens to come out to manipulate the cameras.
Okay.
Okay, so that's just food for thought for you, sir, you know, whatever you guys decide what you wanna do, so, um.
I, I think you'll find that there's a lot of, uh, uh, opportunities for different vendors of all shapes, sizes and, um, a- and again, it's gonna be what fits the county and city the best.
Correct, I agree, thank you.
So does the county and the city both have cameras that are a no-go or just the city? I thought that was just the city.
Adam?
No, it's the county and the city, yes. Yeah, there were Dahua cameras that popped up in both of our scans that we ran for both the county and the city.
Problem with them?
Because of.
Um, well, yeah, so there's a couple of issues. So what is, is that they are a, um, Chinese state-linked manufacturer. Um, so there's, uh, there were concerns that were, you know, brought up about like potential vulnerabilities and backdoors and things like that. The other thing is, is that the National Defense, um, the, the National Defense Authorization Act, they actually banned procurement and use of Dahua and Hicvision, Hictvision was the other manufacturer, but they banned the use of that equipment in federal agencies and for federal contractors as well. Um, and there's just a lot of like privacy and data security concerns around those devices.
Isn't that part of the Buy America Act?
Is that recent?
Oh, it's, it's been out for about four or five years, I think. We quit buying all that stuff.
I- i- in our report, we're gonna give you a link to the FTC guidelines, um, so that way you can, you know, go through that and look at, you know, our recommendations, you know. Basically, you know, you can go see for it yourself, you don't have to take our word for it. But if you, if you go to, um, anyone's welcome to go to the FTC guidelines and, and read through that.
Okay.
That was a great question, Sam, thank you so much for that. Uh, anyone else there have questions for the stronghold team on kinda where we're going? Is there anything that you're hoping to see in the final report that, um, you would like to communicate to us? I mean, we're open for any of those things, that's kinda why we schedule these final calls before we, you know, sit down and, and deliver the final version.
So I, I have some questions, if I may, Jason, it's a yes or no, basically, cause I really don't want you to go into and, uh, a long explanation of this, because if we're gonna get in the report, um, that'd be great. If it's, if it's a no answer, then maybe we should talk about it and try to add it to the report, but. So, if I may, on the software side, do we have any software that's, um, getting ready to lapse? Where, um, our, uh, what's the word, our, uh?
Expire?
Yeah, it expires, but it's, it's our, uh.
End of life.
I'm sorry, say it again?
End of life.
Yeah, but, um, you know how you subscribe to like Mi- Microsoft and your, it expires, what is that called?
It's a license. Yeah, your license, yeah, the license is gonna expire. Are you in danger of losing any type of licensing that you already been purchasing? So that is, um, that is depending on a couple thing, I know you said yes or no. Um, but I would probably just say yes, at this point.
And that, that leads to another, you know, one other thing that would be good to have, um, for both the city and the county is if, um, through your procurement, you know, methods, however you're procuring and paying for the software, you know, through our assessment, we can see what softwares that you're, you're using. But typically those procurement methods have expiration dates in there, like when they expire and different things like that. Um, if you're able to share those with us, we would be happy to, you know, include those in their, in the report. Um, that's just something that, you know, typically, um, we just scan to see what kinda software you're using, but we're happy to work with you on that if you could share those documents with me.
What, what documents?
Procurement, procurement processes, how we, how we go about buying these softwares and how we go about figuring out what softwares we want. I think, I honestly, Jason, I think that's something that we're probably gonna rely on you guys to help us with moving into the future.
Okay, um, we can provide lists and so you're, like Avion said, your answer's gonna be yes. We're gonna report what softwares we do see. Um, we'll, also the report will, you know, if there's something that's expired, you know, typically we can see that. Um, with that additional procurement information, we can also provide more, but we, not, not necessary that we need it. So, thank you for that one. What, I, I think you might've had a few more.
Yes, sir. Are there any, are there any glaring vulnerabilities within our network or our equipment, uh, at this point? And if, if so, have, have we been able to mitigate that?
So, um, like one of the things that we talked about early on, if there was such a thing, we would've probably notified you and taken immediate act. So, um, like one of the things that we talked about early on, if there was such a thing, we would've probably notified you and taken immediate action. So, um, you know, there's nothing right now that we see. Um, the really good, the good thing, uh, is for the county and the city is in this interim contract that we have in place, we're actually, uh, we have a tool that is now in place that will, um, kinda fight any activity that's going on. There's some additional security layers that's going to be recommended for both the city and the county. Um, and we will, will highlight those, but to answer your question, that one would be probably more so no.
Okay. Those are really the only big ones I have there.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, sir.
Is there any, any other questions?
I don't believe that David, Sam and myself are big users. I would like to be able to use the printer. Nothing I have hooks up to it, but, um, these, these, we have some people that are employees here that, um, do you guys have any questions? I mean, you guys are users. You run into things. Can you?
The only question I would have-
See if you'd be able to resolve anything that- Yeah.
Jason?
Jason, this is Sheriff Martin.
Hello, Sheriff Martin. Thank you for joining us.
My question is during your recommendation, are you going to list out or explain the need of the separations between certain elected officials' offices and department heads that they should not be tied together in the same network?
Well, um, and I'm gonna let Adam or, or Avion maybe, um, add to this, but, uh, there are ways and the best example I can give you Sheriff is, um, kinda think about it as a hotel. You know, when we all go to a hotel, there are certain common areas that, you know, just by being a guest at the hotel, you have access to. But everyone has their individual key cards to get into their own individual room. And only people with those, you know, those particular key cards can get into those rooms. And so through technology, we can set that up to where, um, a network, uh, has each individual room, so each individual elected office can have their own room and their own things that they can only access that no other elected official or anyone else can get to. But then there are some common things that, uh, just the county in general, like what I'm thinking is like general, like, um, different email accounts or HR kind of things, you know, things that are, are, are very specific. But you are able to set it up to where only the sheriff can access the sheriff things, only the treasurer can access treasurer things, only commission can access commission things.
Were we not like that before, Jason? Were we not like that?
Adam? It, it- Yeah, yeah, yeah. I was just gonna say that it's partial. There are some elements, like in parts of the network, it's set up where it's segmented and other parts it's not, right? So it's, you know, kinda half and half a little bit today.
And this is just, and I was just gonna say, just to ask the sheriff question, uh, uh, yes, it would, as part of our, um, you know, onboarding, you know, you know, everything comes out and everything works out well. You choose Stronghold as your provider, we will segregate every single office. So each office will have their own virtual LAN, which what we call a VLAN. That means that they will have their own IP address. And the only way that each office would talk to each other if there was a, a need for it. So, you know, um, if the assessor needed to talk to the collector, so on and so forth, then we can connect one IP or multiple IPs based on what the electric official has allowed us to do. Um, but by default, that's what, that is our standard, uh, procedure and process.
And the only reason why I did ask that question is cause I have two of my employees here, uh, support staff that follows the rules under the KBI and CEGIS rules, which follows, uh, the FBI and Department of Justice, and I'm just trying to make sure that there's not any interlink between the, uh, servers or the highways that pass through the servers. If they, uh, take an exit off somewhere and they come back on, then it's still a straight flow between point A to point B.
Absolutely. We are CEGIS certified, so we, we completely understand that process.
Glad he understands. I'm glad he understands. You know, he's on the, you know.
And I think to lay the sheriff's concern and his staff's concern, I think because Stronghold's a contractor, they're, they're going to operate in, in accordance to the contract that's been laid in front of them. So as governing bodies, I think the three of us, along with the city, along with the, the law enforcement, both the dep- uh, both the sheriff and the PDs, we need to come to some type of agreement and nothing gets changed within that security protocol without everybody's voice at the table. Does that make sense? That way I can arbitrarily go in there and say, well, we're gonna allow PD to talk to sheriff or public works. It has to be all of us in consensus and I mean, it should be what we call a security council. Would you, would you?
Yeah, and majority of the time, about ninety-nine percent of the time, it's gonna be separate and it's gonna be
Right.
real convincing as to why you want to merge or do whatever.
Well, I don't even know why, why you're merging. Is it so you can share software? I'm just not understanding why offices need to talk to each other on the-
Well, that's what it comes down to. Y- yes, so sometimes there is a, sometime the software for some examples, sometime there is a software that connects the collector and the assessor together. Cause you know, some of those come hand to hand like, you know, a GIS or a report, or reporting software. I mean, those are the two that we see and sometimes you have your, uh, your, your dispatch, nine-one dispatch connecting to the sheriff department. If there's, if they're sharing, uh, the CEGIS network. Uh, those are the type of things that we look at, that we see across counties that there is some type of, um, connection there with two departments.
So what he's talking about is that we have a software called OmniGo ITI.
Right.
They, they recognized it when they did their, uh, assessment or whatever you refer to. The main hub of it sits with the dispatch and that's how we connect with, uh, the police and the fire. Yeah, and the FBI, so when they do their checks and stuff like that. So yes, we are at some point through the software, particular software, that we are somewhat semi-connected, but we're not completely connected, if that makes sense.
Yeah.
So in other words, I could go look at their stuff through their reports or their records management with the approval through the software company that we have and vice versa, they have approval to look at ours. But they don't have the access to go deeper into the software, find out what we're doing.
Well, yeah, that should be set by-
Yes.
That should be set by whoever made your credentials, whether, how far you can get, right? Yeah.
But apparently they've already identified the software, the records management system of OmniGo and apparently it appears to be okay where OmniGo would be going on this.
Well, like I can view, I know that the police department's made a report, but I don't actually receive that report. I can't access it.
Right.
But I can see that there's a report been made.
Cause they've given you access to see that there's a report.
I can see their report number, but I don't access the actual report. They don't access ours. We have neighboring, um, counties as well that we can see.
So the company, the software company that you pay, this Omni, don't, aren't they the ones that set up your credentials and give you? I mean, they're, they should be really the ones that are telling you how deep you can get in the system, really, right?
Anything else, sir?
Did that, Sheriff, did that answer your question? Are, are we okay with that one?
Yes, sir. Thank you very much.
Oh, you're welcome. Thank you for the question. Any other questions for, for the Stronghold team?
Matt, you got anything?
No.
I don't believe so.
Okay. Thank you. Uh, Avion and Adam, what questions do we have for Bourbon County and City of Fort Scott as we look to, to wrap up this assessment? Any, any final questions on your end?
I'm good. I'm good as well. Nothing super crazy. Just, uh, yeah, we'll get out there, get everything wrapped up and get the final presentation ready to go.
Did you, do you guys need us to talk about separation or starting that separation from the city? Were, were you wanting to talk about that, Brad, or?
I'd like to know what's gonna be taking place to get that done, yes.
So, um, you know, those four areas that we kinda talked about, like you're gonna see as priorities, uh, you know, obviously the network segmentation was, uh, at top of, you know, top of the list. Um, we will be developing a somewhat of a scope of work of what that would entail and what the recommendations would be. And, uh, w- we'd be happy to, to provide that, that to you, you know, within that report. Because there's gonna be some, some things on both sides, uh, both the county and, and the city as, as we, uh, you know, look to, to make that, that cut, that separation. So, um, i- is that something you were wanting, uh, m- more detail tonight or if we put that in that report, would that be okay, Brad?
No, that's fine. Put it in the report, it'll be fine.
Okay. Um, what we were looking at again, um, is wrapping up our part, the latter part of next week. Did not know what would make the most sense to sit down, um, uh, obviously, we would prefer to be, you know, in person and, and deliver this report and I'm not sure who all needs to be in attendance. I will say that there are gonna be items within this report that are security-related and sensitive, you know, information um, that, um, you know, we will be sharing. So I want you to take that into account as, as you tell us what would be, uh, the best method. If we need to meet with the city in one meeting and the county in one meeting, we're happy to do that. Obviously, uh, as interconnected as you are, it does, um, lend itself to, to make sense to, to have both conversations going on at the same time. And when we're talking about the city, you know, just focus on that. And then when we're talking about the county and then, you know, we can come together on, on those joint things. So we're happy to accomplish that anyway and I just don't know what, um, what your schedules look like towards the end of next week, um, or even the first part of the following week. So if you guys wanna try to set something today, we can. If you wanna talk amongst yourselves and then send me some, you know, dates and times that might work, we're happy to, to accomplish that. But I really think that, uh, like I said, the latter part of next week or early part of the next one, we would have this all ready to go for you.
Would you be ready to go by the, let's see, this is, let's see where we at right now, ten? The twenty-first?
Yes, sir.
Do you guys have any kinda work session after your meeting?
We can.
Well, I mean, I didn't know if you had any-
I don't think we have anything set for that one, but we have a meeting that night.
Yeah.
If you want a work session afterwards, yeah.
I was just gonna say-
I don't know that we can go in an executive session in a work session. It'd have to be-
A special meeting.
We do that before.
Well, what time?
Five-thirty's when we start.
If we can get our commissioners to come in at, how long do you think it'll take, Jason? An hour, hour and a half?
Yeah, we're gonna need at least an hour. Um, and when we start, you know, diving into some of these, uh, other issues, it may open up a lot of other questions, but to be safe, we need to schedule an hour.
Okay. Let me see if I can get my commissioners, cause we're, we have a meeting next week, next Tuesday, so that's too soon.
So let's plan on four o'clock, tentatively plan on four o'clock on the twenty-first and then we can force correct if we need to. Does that sound good, Jason?
Four o'clock on the twenty-first. Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
Um, is that gonna be at the county offices or city offices?
County's fine.
Okay. I will, uh, mark that off. I think right now you will definitely have myself and Adam and maybe one other Stronghold employee, uh, that will be there. So, um, i- if not two, if not three. I think Avion's actually out of town, as I would bring him again, but, uh, he's gonna be out of town on that day.
That sounds good.
Sounds good.
Um, in the, in the interim, um, if there's any other issues, you know, from a support standpoint, I know we're, uh, we're doing the reactive kind of support for both city and county. Um, there's really not a lot of, you know, in, in that, that contract we have in place right now, again, it was just a sixty-day kinda get you past the hump kinda thing. Um, just wanted to make sure that there's really not a lot of proactive, uh, room built in there. It's just more like, you know, reactive. But again, if there's something that you guys need, uh, don't hesitate to call us.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome. You guys, uh, really appreciate your time and look forward to, to meeting with everyone again on Monday, the twenty-first.
Thank you for what you've done so far.
Thank you.
Bye-bye.
Thanks, everyone.
Thank you. Bye-bye.
I guess we're good.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yep.
So did we have that first executive session for?
Yeah, that was for them. That, yes, that was for Stronghold if they needed it.
Okay.
Sounds like they wanna do all that next.
Before, yeah, and I think I get to leave. So, um, the contracts we signed, that I think was twenty-five hundred, sixteen hundred for us or whatever. When does the other contract start for them to stay around and help us?
We've, it's monthly, it's month to month and we've already approved to start paying that, so.
Okay. So is that gonna be part of our MOU that we've already signed? For the thirty-five thousand for the yearly?
We need to look, we need to look into that and see how that's gonna play out, cause it's, I mean, it's definitely, the amount's change, I mean, that we're paying is changing, so.
I, if, if I, if I may, I said, table that. Because the thing is that you don't know what you don't know. You don't know what you want right now. You don't know what you need. So my thing is, let's get together, let's listen to what they have to say.
Are you asking if you're covered on the interim until we find somebody?
I'm wanting to make sure I'm not gonna get an invoice.
I think Avion said that you're covered. I think that's what Avion said.
Yeah, I want to make sure I'm not getting an invoice. That's gonna be the issue.
You should, no.
I, I mean, I'm not speaking for Stronghold, but they-
Unless you guys sign something with them. Did you sign something with them? Cause only people have signed anything has been us.
Your deal's still with us.
Yeah.
We had to sign a sixteen-hundred dollar.
For your health check?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. Because that contract was for our health check.
You had, yours was higher than that.
Right.
Yes. We got a different one.
Yeah. But the interim stuff shouldn't, shouldn't-
When does it start? When does the interim stuff start?
Well, they're done with our health check and they're already helping us.
Okay. Alright. As long as we're covered, we're good.
But my question is because we're, we're, the three of us are lost as far as like, what was, what was the county's IT support? What was their, what was their function for your side? Cause I don't know. I mean, other than, I, I really don't. I can't say that.
The MOU is very vague.
Yeah.
Um, so.
We'll have to, well, you know, in the long term, one will decide. You guys will be deciding.
Yes.
Deciding yourselves.
We'll go out for our own RFPs and everything, yeah.
So.
I mean, it-
So, but in, in the, in the, until then,
They're gonna help us.
I know, I know they told you that you guys, cause I watched that meeting, that the memorandum of understanding you, you have with us, so they're gonna-
Yeah, so that's-
Yeah.
Stronghold will keep, continue to help us. I have no doubt about that.
Right.
So what I'm saying is once we figure out what Stronghold comes to the table with and, and, and the report, you and your team can figure out exactly what you need to do on, on the city side and then we can figure out what we need to do on our side.
I think we have to figure it out together.
Right.
The intertwining part.
Right, and then what happens?
Sheriff, wait a minute. You're not leaving, are you?
No.
Okay.
The, the two will merge, you know what I'm saying? Because, I mean, some of the things Avion said in there, yeah, I was, when I, when I heard it, I was like, yep, that's true. You start parsing out hardware and stuff like that, then you're, the city's gonna incur and that's up to you guys.
Oh, yeah. We will.
Yeah. So.
But Stronghold is a, they're very above-the-board company. They're very upfront. They're not gonna, I don't believe that they're gonna do a whole lot of things and then send you something. They were, they sent me something, just lickety-split, just as soon as they knew something was needed. And then when Avion came to your meeting-
Jason's been very good.
Yes, when he came to your meeting, he, I did hear him state in your meeting that, you know, he's, he's got you. You know, they're, they're not leaving you hanging.
They've been very good. They've been very good.
I very much like them. They've been very helpful. So.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Brad.
Anything else for us?
No, we're good.
Sheriff?
It's nice meeting you.
I think the next one, I'm out, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
You come sit with us?
Yeah.
Hey, nice meeting you too, sir.
We'll let you, uh, I'm pretty sure we're good on the twenty-first.
Okay.
For the-
Well, let me find-
Seventh of August, I'm sorry.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay.
Sheriff, I know you were talking about, um, I don't know, that thing keeps hopping around here. I don't know where it came from. You were talking about branching out on, uh, on your network in here. And so if you, and I've been talking about to myself, not talking to anybody about it really, but, um, separating this IT budget, because I'm just starting to learn how it works and I've just learned that, you know, we kinda get- And I've just learned that, you know, we kinda get, um, technology money just all over the place. The deeds has technology money, the treasurer has a little bit, the clerk has some. And, and then the rest of the budget, you know, we just kinda use it wherever. I don't think you get any technology in your budget, do you?
No, I don't. And but probably the, and I apologize for interrupting, probably the proper term to use would be a standalone.
Standalone.
That the sheriff's department is a standalone, separate from the county and any other, uh, offices within that county. Well, how he explained that. Uh, a lot of the sheriffs and stuff, they have their own, uh, standalone away from the county. In regards to your question, uh, the, uh, the monies and stuff, I do not budget for IT, cause it always fell under the IT department whenever anything is needed. Which is, that's one of the questions that, uh, I needed to ask, and there's not a discussion or decision that needs to be made right now. It's just something that you might want to, uh, think about, is that, uh, our phone system, we were in the process of changing our phone system, since this kinda falls within the IT department, since they were in charge of the phone system. Our phone system is pretty much outdated. I can't think of the word to use. And just recently, it was just brought to my attention that, uh, the tree, the phone tree or the message tree, meaning that when you call somebody and you wanna talk to, uh, let's say the registered offender, dial five oh three. Or if you wanna talk to the, uh, evidence custodian, dial five oh one. Those are the trees that you pick those numbers from, and they'll get you to that person. Apparently, there was an update or something that had happened. And it basically knocked our, uh, telephone tree back to the original, original, uh, settings that it was. And so I've already reached out to the company that is in charge of that. And they are looking, uh, at it to see what they're gonna need to do tomorrow. They're supposed to call me, and we're gonna have to reset that phone tree up. So that's one of the questions that I have in regards to the phone system itself. We were looking at replacing the phone system, uh, with, uh, Crock Hand, we have the bids and stuff. But I was gonna come to the board and no decisions made. Well, that on record, no decisions made, but something to think about. It's a very low cost, but define what low cost is. It's about less than five thousand dollars to go ahead and switch the phone service over to the Crock Hand system and have them do what they need to do. But, uh, like I said, that's just something I'll be bringing back up, and I will forward you that information to.
The, the switch over and then the monthly after that, I suppose.
Yes, I have to re- review the contract and stuff.
And then.
But this, what, but my most important number one priority is the standalone for the servers itself. Okay, just to be completely standalone.
You know, like what he was explaining about having, like, all in one, but you guys have your own separate. Was that workable or?
Yes.
It is workable, that's okay with you? Okay. What I was wanting to.
The, the thing that, I may be putting words in your mouth, I apologize for it in the way. I think from a security standpoint, I believe what the sheriff is trying to mitigate is inadvertent intrusion to his system and inadvertent extraction of information from his, his system. And if we can put, if stronghold can keep him in his, 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 his entity within our server, but put a firewall separating the civil side from the, the sheriff's side, then I think he's gonna get what he needs without extra money. Because putting a standalone system sounds really good, but it's gonna cost money. It's gonna cost money in material, in, in time, labor.
But if stronghold does what they said, it wouldn't have to be. But what about the cloud? Do we have to have a server, isn't there a cloud?
They have their own cloud, stronghold does.
And that brings up the next question too, because that was part of the discussion in regards to the phone, was being separated from and as the, as the server and stuff like that. I got a bids on that already, and that was one of the questions that I was going to bring to the table. And I guess this would be the best time since we're still talking about IT, we're not violating any of the, uh, coma.
Special meeting, yeah.
Uh, coma violations and stuff. Is that my question would be this. With stronghold, is this a temporary situation? And if it is, when is the cutoff date to go out for bids for other vendors? That's that, that need, that, that's the big question here.
They're interim to carry us for sixty to ninety days on a month to month basis. Hopefully, in that sixty to ninety days, we can split off. And so we could have more options, so that we don't have to do exactly what the city's doing, and the city don't have to do exactly what we're doing, because it's so intertwined.
I think, I think we'll get these audit updates, and then from that point, then we'll decide, you know, which direction. I mean, I, it's obvious they're gonna go their direction, we're gonna go our, our direction, so.
And that's just, and I apologize for interrupting, but that's the, that's has been kinda the unknown recently as to where are we going with this?
So what's your concern?
Yeah.
And so, uh, my concern is that, that the bid process goes out fairly. Have other vendors come in.
We are, yeah.
And that's just for the clarification and stuff like that. Like I said, I've already reached out to a, a vendor too, and I have all those bids. But it was just kind of unclear, I understand if stronghold's gonna be here now, if, uh, stronghold's gonna be here for thirty or sixty days. And then on day forty five, just before the sixty day mark hits, go out for bid for vendors, have that certain days to review. And then when that sixty day mark hits, they walk away, you have your vendor, they've had a meeting, they know what's right, what's wrong, what needs to be done. And everybody steps out, the next person steps in. So there's no delay in that system, in that process, does that make sense?
Yeah, you're talking about onboarding.
Yeah, so that's, yeah.
So we can get with stronghold.
So that's just an example.
They're very above the board, I very, I very much think they wouldn't, um.
And I'm not saying that they're not, I'm just saying.
I think we're gonna put it, I mean, I know we're gonna put it out for bid.
Yeah, and that's the question that.
Yeah, and I think we'll get with stronghold and find out what they would need, like, to do that, uh, yeah, onboarding. Um, so that they know, like I said, maybe they need more than fifteen days, I doubt that they do.
And they're giving us.
They were able to do this audit and in a couple of days.
And I think with the assessment or the final assessment report that, that the meeting's set up for, for the twenty first, that will give you an idea for sure. If you, if it's done, or we need a couple of more weeks to do.
Right, and then we'll, we'll be able to proceed forward.
And they're giving us a bid document, so it's apples to apples, so that, so that when we put it out for bid, these are our requirements, and this is what you, we want you to bid on, because this is what we need.
If you don't mind sharing, you said you already got a, a bid out?
Well, yeah.
That was for phones though, wasn't it?
No, that's right.
Yeah, with IT too.
But we can resubmit that due based on the changes that has, because that happened before the, uh, how do I wanna put this?
Before the change.
Before the reorganization of the IT department, I already had the bid. Now with the reorganization of the IT department, now I will probably will request to do something different.
I just say what you have on, uh, in need of standards, if you would wanna share that with, with them, and they could put that in the, the, what she.
Well, I can't share, I, that's not fair if I share.
No, yeah.
Not the company, but, but what you had in, in a, uh.
Yeah, I can list that without the cost.
May I for just a moment?
Yeah.
So I think that we all need to come to an agreement before we put it out to bid, whether you're going to stay with us, or if you're going to go out on your own and hire a different company than us. Because that will change the bid substantially, because how many people do you have, thirty? So we would be getting a bid for seventy instead of a hundred. You know, so we, we need to know what direction we're gonna go before we do that.
And, and that would be perfect, you know, in a perfect world. And me looking at it this way, and I'm looking at this as a taxpayer, why does the department, or why does the county have two different separate vendors?
Well, I, I don't want to, but it sounds like you wanted to, so.
But I'm just saying, I think people that are involved, especially with the sheriff's office, have the sensitivity and the, uh, thinking of the word here, that we do every day through CGIS, NCIC and stuff like that. We, the sheriff's department, sheriff's office should have a say as to which vendor or which way to go to as well, that's all I'm saying.
I understand, yes. And, and I wouldn't mind asking all the elected officials to look over the bid. But the bid should be, again, apples to apples, unless somebody says, well, we can't provide that service, so, sorry, we're out, you know.
But like I said, just answer your question, just as a taxpayer here, not as a sheriff. Just as Bill Martin, who pays taxes on South Horton, why do we have two separate vendors paying two separate things?
So you wanna work together to get the same vendor, you wanna work together to agree on a vendor.
To agree, yes.
Wonderful, okay, I, I was under the impression that you wanted to branch off regardless and have.
Well, like I said, the change because of reorganization of the IT department.
Okay, okay, so we're good now, okay.
And what I, what I was telling you is, like you said, stronghold is writing out a bid process. We wanna make sure that, that, that the stuff that he needs at his department is, is in that bid process. That's our reason why I brought up what you already had. I mean, just as far as what kind of equip, you know, if there's anything special you need or any special software, they can put that in, in that process. So then when we're looking at all vendors, they can see what the whole county needs. Same way with treasurer's office and, and appraiser's office, if they got something they need special that, that we're not putting in that bid process, we need to get it added to that.
Ideally, if I could figure it out, I would like for things like IT to be in every budget. So if, if, uh, our office has three people, we would maybe have a three hundred dollar, um, a month, you know, in our, in our budget. And then if Patty has seven, she would have seven hundred, if it's roughly that much per person per month. And then you, uh, you know, and just build it into the budgets, and the, and then when we collectively decide on one, we just, you know, all of the budgets shoulder a little bit.
Or create a, an equipment, uh, reserve fund or something like that to go in the general fund and just have one.
It would just be real nice if we understood what it was cost in all departments, yeah.
And then the last thing to bring to the attention is that, uh, the, the system itself, the computers are gonna have to be upgraded to ten, because a lot of the program, yeah, the eleven. A lot of the programs that we use will not be able to operate until those systems are upgraded. And like I said, when we, you registered offenders, through CGIS, other things too, we need to figure out when that's gonna go into effect. Cause I don't need a hiccup down there.
I understand, they said we have twenty seven workstations that are gonna need upgraded, so hopefully the rest are good.
So that's kinda a workflow for you guys to figure out what you, when that needs to be done.
And usually, when you were talking about the phones, uh, you're talking about just your department down there that they're outdated, or are we talking overall?
Actually, it's overall, it's between, once again, it was gonna split, because we had the same phone system to where if somebody would call, it goes to, we have the separate extensions. But then again, we're separated, so when you actually call fourteen forty, you're gonna be able to go somewhere else instead of calling thirty eight hundred.
Well, I didn't know, I mean, like, like, if it was here as well, if we should be.
Recently, didn't you?
I, I just sent out a list of whose extensions were aware.
Cause I thought, cause I saw that list, so we use that as an example to show.
We were just trying to update it, because there were some people on there that didn't work for the county anymore. So we were just trying to update that, that was with Laura and I, calling her out, she called out all the different places to find out who was out, what extension. But as for actually changing what it says when somebody calls, we didn't do that. I'm not sure who that actually.
So basically, our phone tree, the phone setup is that right now?
Well, I think we should be looking at the phone bill number. I don't know who does our phone company right now.
Okay, so, hey, we're, we're all over the board.
You're right, where's our parliamentarian to get us back to? I might get so far off.
I need to back up all the way to the beginning.
Thank you.
I don't work that way, but I'm, you need, correct me, please. So what I'm hearing you tell me is you're willing to keep your server siamese with the county server. But it has to have a firewall, so that you're protected, you and your, your, your organization.
I can do that.
Okay, so we're not looking for a standalone system, we're looking for a segmented system. Okay, that's perfect.
Thank you for asking that, yeah, thank you.
The sixty ninety day thing?
Yeah.
Yeah.
No?
No.
It, it won't be separated in that time?
No, it, 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 it does, this.
I don't know anything about.
I'm, I'm in the middle, I was handed a document, it was about that thick. It was done May of twenty twenty five. It was for this building.
Oh.
And I, I finished reading through it, hacked it, handed it off to somebody, another functional expert to read through it. We don't have anything, and no offense to, to Sheriff Martin, okay? I don't know of any agency that can go out and get a bid without having money to pay for the project. You can, the way it works in government, and I may, I may be wrong with, with, with county government or state government, but I'm pretty sure they have something akin to what I, I know, which is, before I can go out for a bid for this thermos, I have to have money to buy that thermos. So I put a PWS together, I put it out there for an RFQ request for, or for a quote, okay? Or an RFP request for proposal, they come back and they say X, Y, and Z, I get how many bids, okay? If I don't have the money, they can charge me for the bid. Do you understand that? Those contractors will charge you for a bid.
I think, I think you lost me, because the IT service that we're gonna pay for, we do have money for that. I don't know about the separation, cause that's extra, because I don't know how much extra.
We have some money, okay? What I'm getting at is, the way we procure goods and services in the county is broken. It doesn't make sense.
That doesn't apply to this.
Yes, it does.
Well, no, no, the sixty ninety days, uh, uh, go ahead and finish.
It does apply to us, because here's the thing, how are you gonna grade contractor A versus contractor B versus contractor C? You don't have a grading matrix. The document that I read, that the county gave me.
Oh, I, I have one, I'm sorry.
So basically, what I'm saying.
Yeah, they made one, they made, where's my phone? The, the people we paid, they made one.
It's, that's not my point, just let me finish.
Oh, okay.
So the thing is, we need to come up with a concrete way of how we procure goods and services in the county. But that takes a little bit of time. I'm saying sixty to ninety day may be too soon. I'm looking more like one twenty.
We're gonna pay half.
That's six months.
I don't know if they want us that long, Sam.
Stronghold is who we're doing.
Yeah, I, I understand, but one again, why would they not want us for six months? Where, if they don't want us.
Because they have us in the city and it's cau, it, it might be costing them some money right now, cause they're doing so much extra.
And, and at which point, they can come back and renegotiate the terms of that contract, they can do that, okay? They have that latitude. What I'm saying is, we need to get all of our ducks in a row before we go down this road. Because what I'm hearing from my, my colleagues, and what I'm hearing from the sheriff and everybody else is like, this is, looks like it's gonna be permanent, that we're gonna have a contractor do our IT work.
Yeah.
We're versus an FTE, FTE, okay? And I'm fine with that. But I think we need to slow roll this, I need, we need to capture the sheriff's requirements, we need to capture our requirements, the city's requirements, and we need to parse them out, compartmentalize them, so that we know what we're going to do an RFQ for.
I think that's what we're getting on the twenty first.
No, we're getting.
We're not getting that?
You're getting, you're getting a health report, and you're getting what they think they need. We haven't, the city doesn't know what they need or what they want, they haven't talked to. We have, this is our first conversation with the sheriff, or at least my first conversation with the sheriff.
But stronghold interviewed the sheriff, so they know what he needs. They interviewed everybody, right?
They interviewed, but they didn't go into the needs assessment of it.
Right, because here's, here's the other, I'm not done, cause I wrote notes.
Okay.
He wants a new phone, I don't see a problem with that. My question's real simple, why do you need a phone? Why can't you use Teams? I don't know that answer, because most agencies have removed these phones. These phones are gone, you talk to people on your computer. I make phone calls on my computer, I receive phone calls on my computer, there is no phone line. You're using the internet to contact. Now, does he, does, and again, I'm, I'm, I'm not saying, I'm not the functional expert when it comes to law enforcement. Maybe dispatch needs a landline, I understand that, you need to have redones, I get all that. But what I'm saying is, for the vast majority, even in this building, do we all need landlines? I mean, how much are we paying a month for the landlines in this building? If we convert everybody in this building to, to Teams? Because Teams is actually in eleven. When you download eleven, Teams is part of that, is part of that software package.
For customers, like, people?
Question.
They, they call me, when they need me, they call me, I answer my phone. When I call them, I use my phone, I mean, not my phone, my computer. That's what I, I use Teams, Microsoft Teams.
If Joe Smo out here calls, like he does now, thirty eight hundred, and he wants to get Commissioner Sam Tran, then it switches, there's a voicemail that, that clicks over to you?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
We're behind.
All I'm saying, you know, what I'm saying on the phone, and we'll, we'll, we'll have to review that when we, when we do put it out for bids, but it, it sounds like it's broke now.
It, it, it is, and I'm not, I'm not trying, I'm not trying to take anything away from Sheriff Martin, and believe me. It, it, it is, and I'm not, I'm not, I'm not trying, I'm not trying to take anything away from Sheriff Martin, and believe me. All I'm trying to do is inject something where we're just like, hey, there's maybe something else we could use to save money, because we're all trying to save money. And what I'm saying is Microsoft Teams allows you to make phone calls on the computer versus having a landline. They came in, took all of our thousand dollar phones off the desk, and we haven't had them for a year, and I haven't missed it.
We use Teams too where I came from, so I know.
See what I'm saying?
Can the public call the team?
Yeah, that's the question I just asked.
Yes.
Switch forward.
So, that, that is something I would like for us to consider as we're going forward on that, um, and the bidding process, those are two things, other than that.
Would you find somebody to give us a presentation on that? Oh, that, you, do they do phones?
No, they, they do, it's not phone, Teams is a software that you can make phone calls on. Teams is also how the sheriff can talk to three or four of his teammates all at once from various parts of the county. The sheriff can just go in there, type in a Teams meeting, and they'll send it to their cellphone, because their cellphone has Outlook. Your cellphone has Outlook on it, mine does.
Yeah, that was a team thing, that, that was a.
Right, so what I'm getting is the sheriff can send it, and he goes, I need to talk to all you guys now, get on it, and they call in, he can talk to everybody on Teams. We could do the same thing.
With a phone number? With a, with a phone number though?
We're already, it's already built in.
Yeah.
If we're operating anything.
Because I had to get on this team through an email, I didn't get it on a phone number.
Just simple things of a camera being attached and a microphone being attached and stuff like that.
Yes, sir.
But, uh, you know, I, I'll be more happy to set up a, a meeting with the, with the commission, you know, with Kroll Camp coming up and explaining the services and the needs, other typical landline, cause some of these people, are they gonna be able to actually know how to use it when they call in or transfers and stuff like that? I don't know, I mean, we're venturing down an uncharted area is what it is, I guess.
Yes, sir.
And so, and then trying to go, trying to go that way, so.
But I mean.
Well, I'm willing to learn.
Well, I look at, he, he brings up good points, but I'm also the type of guy that's like, you know, thirty years ago, when I first got through bootcamp, we didn't have emails. We had a stupid green computer called the Wang. And it was archaic, but now.
We didn't have that.
Yeah, when we go downrange now, people, when people go downrange now, they're taking college courses, they're doing all kinds of crazy stuff. They can call home with the phone, it, it's technology, we learn to adapt and overcome, so.
It grows, or you don't. Uh, but I think we need to work, like you said, on the bid process before we, uh, let go of.
I will call Jason and ask him to ask you whatever you need asked to get into that.
But we need to go deep dive into that stack of what you said was.
I, I, I don't wanna make any promises because my plate's kinda full right now, but I was just like, when I went through that document, the PWS was half a sheet. That was it, the PWS for this building was half a sheet. But the other two inches was nothing but contract language, which didn't do anything, cause when I started going through, I'm like, well, how do you do this, how do you, how do you, how do you figure out you're gonna go with the guy, the, the, the cheapest guy or the medium guy? You know, there wasn't, they, they didn't even ask for expense. If you go shopping for, for a contractor, the first thing I'm gonna ask you is like, how many have been, of doctors, that's a good one. When you go looking for a doctor and you want surgery, you had surgery, did you ask him, how, how many of these have you done? Or did you just go into the Yellow Pages and I want this guy? Makes sense?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, that's what I'm getting at, we, we need, we need to be able to deep dive into this, which the sheriff is, I, he's doing his thing, I think it's on us to help.
Right, well, well, we need to, we need to have that, uh, purchase policy.
Yes, sir.
And how we're gonna bid. From the military and government acronym, there's a lot of people that are watching and are in this audience, don't understand what PWS is.
It's a performance work statement, yes.
I think that's what they have.
Let them know what that is, so.
Yeah, it's a perfect, everything needs to have a performance work statement, because the thing is, if you went out there and you said, I, hey, Sam, I want a squad car. Okay, my perception of a squad car and your perception of squad car is totally different.
Right.
But if you come to me with the PWS says, I want a V-eight, I want this, I want radio, I want whatever, you spell it out, and then I have to give you what you spell it out.
Like I said, you, you use PWS several times, and there's several people in the audience that are watching, uh, don't understand what a PWS, cause they don't have that military background and stuff like we do here at the table. So, I just wanna clarify that to the people that are watching.
I'd like to give you guys these documents, but I can't print it.
What documents?
From Jason, it says, as you get closer to going out for bid, want to send something, make the process easier, um.
Can you send it to her email?
RFQ, RPF template. Will you send that to Patty?
And just one last thing, just the, the thirty or sixty days, that was just an example, I didn't know. I didn't know for sure what your time, that's how come I said, what's the timeframe, thirty or sixty, some people.
Because we don't, I mean, honestly, I, I wasn't gonna give you a date, sir.
Yeah.
Because in my head, I didn't have a date, I'm just.
I was just throwing out a nest of the timeframe so people have an idea what's going on.
Well, and, and that was, I mean, what we had worked out in turn, uh, for the short term with, with Stronghold. We'd been talking sixty to ninety days, but it sounds like we may wanna have another conversation with them.
Patty, will you print the conversation in that document, he sent a document plus a, like a writing? Yeah, thank you, Patty.
Yes, sir.
Yeah.
This used to send stuff.
Anything else from the commission?
No, I mean, you have anything else to add, sir? We'll do our best to assist you and your team and whatever, you know.
I appreciate it, thank you.
Again, I, there's some, there's some administrative processes that I think are heartbroken, and we definitely need to, I have no intention of kicking this can down the road, I won't, I wanna fix it. So what I was gonna tell you was, I was trying to get, find time to draft a report and give it to you two on that document that I reviewed, which had to do with this building.
Okay.
You know, and we paid for it, and I don't know how, that's the other thing, we paid an engineering firm to be, and I, this is not on security.
I did not, I did not.
Anyways.
That wasn't us.
I did not do that.
You called me to the table.
Thank you, Bill, thank, I just wanted you to be able to be in this conversation.
I appreciate it, thank you. If you need anything else, you know, get hold of me.
Thanks, sir.
Have a good day.
I'll send Jason your number if that's okay.
Yep.
So I can get those things.
Right, have a good evening.
You too.
Thanks.
Is this Ruth, next one, is that GIS?
Yes.
Okay, we worked it out, unless you've got more questions.
Sure, we'll go ahead and go and get the.
Okay, alright, um.
You gotta join this one, right?
No, we're, we're still on, yeah, we're still on the agenda. Uh, pursuant to KSA seventy-five forty-three nineteen B one, I'm, make a move that we break into executive session. Pursuant to KSA seventy-five forty-three nineteen B one to discuss personnel matters of individual non-elected personnel to protect their privacy. This will be the three commissioners and the appraiser, Matt Quick.
How long?
Uh, how long? Uh, let's go to six o'clock, fifteen minutes, and we'll return back to these chambers.
Second. Sorry. It was Commissioner Melbourne.
Thanks. Uh, Beer Bar?
Yes.
Tran?
Yes.
Melbourne, yes.
The executive session.
Oh, okay. I took a little while, but not that long.
Okay, third executive session.
Okay, okay. I think we should close that door.
Which one?
That one there.
Oh, I don't know. It's my fault if it was on there.
I know, like it's... I know, I can hear it, but I don't know which one. I know I can't, can't make you hear that.
I always forget how easy these chairs are.
Yeah, I know. They're kind of scary, baby.
Thank you.
Seen here, uh-huh? Seen here.
Yeah.
Oh, sorry.
Excuse me, sorry, sorry.
Oh my gosh, that's huge. Oh, well, there's six of them.
Meeting back into session. No action this time.
Tran?
Yes.
Milber?
Yes.
And then Beer Bar?
Yes. And then I move that we take a three-minute recess, five-minute recess.
I don't think that needs a vote.
See, this is an RFP.
Is that what you wanted?
This is an RFP. See it? Request for proposal.
Is that what you wanted?
Well, yeah, that's part of it. We need to do it right. I'll look through it.
Okay. I move that we go into executive session pursuant to KS seventy-five dash four-three nineteen B one to discuss personnel matters of individual non-elected personnel to protect their privacy. Be the three commissioners and appraiser Matt Click.
A second.
Milber?
Yes.
Beer Bar?
We didn't give a time either, but yes. Ten minutes? Okay. We'll return at six?
Tran?
Yes.
Six fifteen. Round up to these chambers.
We want to start.
Huh?
Yeah, we want to start.
I know, yeah. It's a lovely coming in from quarter.
Oh, gosh, I didn't know. Did they all know how to get out that door? Which I s-
Yes, she did, so I don't know.
Okay. I was like, 'cause I assumed David would have hidden off there, 'cause I don't know.
I figured you brought them.
Thanks. I have no idea. I don't know. Crazy.
See, now we're...
Um, I'll have to check real quick. I might already get done up there. Not that I have enough time to... If I can do it quick enough. To run. I'm gonna be real quick. I might be able to do it.
Would that be with action?
You gave them an order, I suppose.
Yeah. Okay, we're back in session. I move that we return to session with action. It'd be with no action because it was, you know, it was instructions given that don't need to be public, so.
Zero seven. Second. Fearbauer?
Yes.
Tran?
Yes.
Milber?
Yes.
I move we adjourn the meeting.
Second. Tran?
Yes.
Milber?
Yes.
Fearbauer?
Yes. I guess I didn't need to hit the hammer. I could.
We need to get a block of oak or something.
Oh, I'd have to bring him the one I got. It's a big piece of metal. It'd break the desk.
And you meant this copy to go to Susan, right?
Yes. Yeah, because we passed it around the table. And then you had it up there to stuff it. Oh, yes, I will. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you for attending. So what?